Because Jim.
Because they're on four.
That has to be the four who were here.
The four that were, yeah.
And Jim.
Coffee canisters? It was up.
There's a difference. All right, if everyone rise and do a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the brotherhood which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Try, will you call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Um, without objection, the agenda will be as approved. Uh, we couldn't do this one though. I would welcome a motion to approve the minute minutes from the regular meeting on August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
Through our. May fifth.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Herron.
Yep.
Mr. Lewis.
Yep.
Mr. Sence.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes. Um, and we do not have a warrant present to approve the minutes council work session meeting August sixth, twenty twenty five, so we can't do that one. Tabled yet again, uh, to our next meeting. Uh, so this is our work session. It's a little different than our normal, um, public meetings, so this is our time to work, uh, different items and, uh, projects. So at times you guys will see us, uh, press different members of the staff, anybody guess? But this is not a, uh, it's being, it's open to the public, it's not a pub meeting. I know that sounds the same, but it's slightly different with how they're engaged and not engaged. So moving forward, um, start session one, storm water utility program.
Thank you for having me again. Um, I think we've presented on this a couple of times now. I think everybody here has heard at least about the stormwater utility and what we're studying, what we're looking at. What the kind of goals and objectives. I think this one's kind of more the formal meeting. This is it. This is the last part, now it's, are we going to execute it basically? So again, we've kind of just over the last year and a half or so, as we're going through this, through the study, it was to build the case. It was to look at what the benefits of a program are. What will a stormwater utility do, the village? Uh, then we dug what a proposed rate structure would look like, what that would create in revenue. Identify kind of the next, next steps of now we're here, what are those next steps to execute at? And then I threw in at the end, um, kind of where we're at with some capital improvement projects and how this money could potentially help with those. So that's what we're gonna walk through, uh, over the next five to ten minutes or so here. So again, building the case, um, with stormwater, you know, stormwater utility, what, what does it do? It, it helps you with a funding source, creates a funding source dedicated for the village to use to improve stormwater impacts throughout the village. Um, reduce flooding problems, repair, replace aging infrastructure, um, helps balance some of the pressures with a lot of the developments that are coming. You know, they're ma- they have to manage their stormwater systems on site, but they still put that stormwater into your system downstream. Basically improving the water quality. Again, we know EPA is pushing for that, especially with the dark watershed. Again, that's the regulatory mandates that are coming down there. The quality of life and aesthetics, right? If ponds, basins, stormwater systems are well maintained, if your streams are well maintained, it just looks better, right? People are, people want to use it, people want to go to it, people want to be around it. Again, preservation of property values, that has to do with your flooding i- issues, and if you've got flooding, then property values are gonna go down. Recreation, and then at the end, you've got lawsuits, right? You got flood problems, people are gonna sue somebody, they want, they want somebody to blame. Again, these benefits, they're safe, right? They're stable, they're accountable, they're flexible, equitable, that's the goals. What does that mean? We want the revenue to be consistent, we want it to be dedicated for just stormwater related activities. You'd be, you're accountable, this program makes, makes you accountable to your residents, um, they know how you use those fees. Those funds are going into that dedicated source. You can, you can be accountable to where those get spent on the back end, right? If there's a stormwater project, money into this account came straight to that project. Um, it's, it's flexible, we can fit this rate structure many different ways. We'll have a recommendation here of how we think it would best fit, but again, that can be adjustable and you can change it over time, right? You can come back, if, if it's not working in three years, you can say, hey, we want to adjust this rate structure, it's, it's through your legislation. It's equitable, again, basing the fees on, um, impervious area that a property is contributing to the system, right? So a single family resident's not gonna be built the same as, as a commercial property that has multiple, you know, impervious areas of parking and everything else, so. So those are, again, the benefits of how the program would set up. Again, what, what will it do? It's, the funding will help fund your storms or maintenance. That can be manpower, it could be equipment, it could be even things as mowers to mow ditches, right? If you, if you got a lot of ditches, you're maintaining, um, materials, it can buy pipe, it can supply, it can supply, um, for stormwater quality. Silk fence if you needed it somewhere, anything, anything related to stormwater. Um, it helps fund a repair fund, right? So if, if there's sinkholes, well, why are there sinkholes? It's usually stormwater related, it's usually water related under, underneath the ground. So we can repair those things quickly because you've got a funding source that's sitting there. You know, it may be thinking, I'm gonna go spend that somewhere else on another project, but I need twenty thousand dollars today to go fix a sinkhole that just happened. And we gotta repair a big pipe underneath it. Haley doesn't have to go find money. It's, there's a fund there to, to take care of those things. Um, again, replacement, capital improvement, stormwater compliance, those are the planning things, you plan for those. The top two are more a day to day operational thing that you've got the money, it's kind of like emergency fund, rainy day fund, if you will. Pardon the pun. So proposal rate structure, again, it's based on impervious area. Everybody knows, you know, live in a house, rainwater hits your roofs, it hits your, your driveways, hits your sidewalks, it runs off into the road and, and you hope it goes away. Village has a system out there and it's all good, I'm, I'm good, right? But the village has to maintain that system. So what we do is we look at every residential unit as a single unit. We did, we basically did a statistical evaluation around the village, looking at aerial photos, um, basically doing GIS data from those aerial photos. And the equivalent residential unit is, is twenty six hundred and fifty square feet, you know, did some statistical math on that and here we came. Um, and that's, that's consistent with a lot of communities. You see them anywhere between twi- twenty-five hundred and three thousand square feet typically around the other communities that have stormwater. So again, talk about what impervious surface areas are, um, the single family residents being one, multifamily residential. Our proposal would be that they would be considered commercial, right? So if you've got an apartment complex, they're gonna get one bill to that apartment complex based on their impervious area. The apartment complex owner then is, is, they can deal with how it gets filled out through their, their residence. Same with commercial, industrial, institutional, which would be like nonprofits, like a church or a school, uh, places like that. They're, they would be, they would get this bill as well, evaluate on impervious area. And then again, that gets divided by the two thousand six fifty, and that's how many ERUs they would have. I guess I kind of jumped into this a little bit, but, so what I did was, this is just a sample, these are not particular, I didn't take an actual commercial property in town. I just said, hey, here's commercial property, it's two and a half acres, there's an acre and a half of hard surface, you can do the math, it would be twenty-four point six six ERUs. Did another example of another commercial property, if it was a point seven five acre parcel, you know, almost all impervious at point six five acres, they would end up with a, an equivalent ERU of ten point six eight. What that means is whatever we set the ERU rate at, the dollar figure, you know, be multiplied by that, would be what that commercial property would have to pay on a, whatever schedule it is, whether it's monthly, quarterly, annually. And I threw in like a church, right? They would fall into that. So if a church had two acres of land and they had an acre of rooftop and parking lot, they would have eighteen point nine ERUs in that scenario. Um, so again, this, this is just the math, if we used five dollars per month as, as that rate. Again, that's just a, throwing a number out there for you guys to be able to look at. But at five dollars a month, a single family resident would pay five dollars a month, it would be fifteen dollars a quarter if we went through a quarterly billing. Those three examples I did, commercial property A would be three sixty, almost three seventy, commercial property B would be a hundred and sixty per quarter, only three in the quarter. And then the church would be two hundred and eighty-three a quarter. So we've looked at the whole community, right? And there's two thousand seven hundred and seventy ERUs, fifteen hundred and twenty-five, and these are, these are roughly adjusted. We ran these numbers early in twenty twenty-four, so we know that there's new homes being built, um, there's been things that have adjusted, so I've rounded them off. Uh, but there's fifteen hundred and twenty-five single family residents, that would equate to about ninety-one thousand, uh, annually. Commercial properties, there's nine hundred and fifty-five ERUs currently in town. And those are, I didn't break out the churches, schools, but they're part of that commercial institutional property value. So that's fifty-seven thousand, and then the commercial multifamily, so apartments, um, triplexes, things like that would all fall under this. There's two hundred and ninety ERUs, and that'd be about seventeen thousand annually. So a hundred and sixty-six thousand, again, using the five dollars as the, as the kind of go by. So what, what are our next steps, right? We've gotta, we gotta finalize the rate, and, and again, we're at the point now where I think we've staffed ourselves, so we've kind of vetted through this. Now it's coming to you guys at council level, like what, these are your next steps. Finalize the rate, finalize the legislation, which you should have a draft legislation in your packets. And then, once that happens, it comes back to staff, they would set up the billing process, um, whether we would decide to do a quarterly or monthly. I think right now we're thinking of quarterly billing because there's a refuse collection for all this, all the residents, they pay for their, their trash pickup, and it would become part of that quarterly billing. I think for the non-residential customers, for those commercial properties that are taking care of their trash other ways, it would probably be a monthly billing most likely, but still gonna figure that out. And then once, once all that's done, you begin billing and collect.
It's five dollars, I did a number.
Can I come back to that?
Yeah.
Okay. So let me flip back to, you see that number? If it was five dollars, you collect a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars annually. Capital projects that we've identified over the last year and a half or so, and, and some of these are started, right? Shepherd and Converse, Bicentennial, there's some things happening with those, they're in designs. Those are moving forward, but they're not in construction yet, so if this money were available, you could theoretically call something to it. But all of these projects here are over four million dollars in project cost, and I'm rounding down because these are twenty, twenty-four dollars. So it's over four million dollars and, and that's just stormwater cost. That's not total cost of those projects, that's the stormwater involved with those, those projects. So no matter what number we set this at, it's seed money for these projects, it's not paying for all your stormwater improvements. It's just a drop in the bucket. What's reasonable, I think, is somewhere between five and seven dollars. Comparing, comparing to other communities around you, um, which I didn't put that in here, I think we talked about it at the previous, um, council meeting. But I can provide those to you, those different, different rates. But I think that's, that's the number, it's, you know, and it really depends on how much you want to, where you want to be at, what's, what's the fair value. But I think, like London was nine. I was in Mount Vernon today, they're at six. Mount Vernon is, their, their ERU is a six dollar. There's plenty of others that are anywhere from five to ten dollars, there's some that are still at two dollars, I don't know how they do it, I don't know if they just decided that's where they want to be, but.
He wrote that.
But you're at zero, right? So at least they've got something. So really, I mean, that's, there, answer that first question.
Thank you. Um, personally, I didn't bother with this one. Um, I'm okay with this, I think just figuring out the number is really the only thing that we still had hanging. Nothing, presentation has changed my mind really. Um, is anyone super against instituting this?
I'm not against, I would just say that I would like go on the nine seems very, very high, and just with the times, I would rather sti- like step it in, kind of like when we had in, instituted the water increase, um, control the water, but, um, but that's, that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, so, um, that's probably the mechanism we need to figure out, is like how it's gonna change over time? Is it always be a revoted thing? And can we write, do we have to do it where it's revoted? Or can we do the rates at, like, at standard escalators, like, how does that work?
I think what we did for water and sewer was it automatically, you could write it to automatically escalated for like three years, and then it came back for another vote. So I think it's good practice to re.
Yeah, bring it back, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think that's probably the right approach. Um, no matter what, from zero to five, it's gonna be a Band-Aid ripping and exercise regardless. Now for the ERUs for the individual residents, I mean, I'm, I know it's not nothing, but fifteen dollars a quarter isn't like a huge number at least. Um, I'm getting the commercial, so I'm okay with years of escalation, as Mayor Carney was kind of like suggesting, so we start lower and we end up in the midzone, so like four, five, six, so we start even lower than the average over the three years. Um, I'm also okay with just doing five and being straight on it, five, three years, and maybe say we hold it for three years. You get to the same dollar amount, um, either way, you don't have, people have the sticker shock of it changing. I feel like whatever, for me, like with Netflix, for example, like if they would just increase it once and not increase for three years, I feel better than them constantly coming back to me for another dollar. So I, I think both merits, but I'm okay with either one.
Like, or stickers, like if we buy, like, okay, these go fifteen, because it's like outrageous, I think that would be the sticker shock, but, like, you know, like I said, we have zero, and that money, so, it's up. Like you said, having that kind of nest egg for that seed.
When would this be effective?
January.
January first. Um, so we'd want to, uh, Chase, put together something, communication on like the, hey, this, this exact number of like the four million dollars, and this is only hitting into that a little bit, it's not even really doing it. And all of those projects aren't on developments, they're all on infrastructure that we have existing, because we're always trying to express that. We're trying to fix the infrastructure of current, um, I think that would be important, that would help.
Part of that communication as well is that you've got these new communities that have put in new storm sewers, new detention basins and everything, they're also paying into this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And they're gonna be paying.
They're not gonna get the benefit for thirty years, but they're gonna help.
No one's gonna.
Oh, but they're, but no, but I'm saying that's gonna help.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
The other projects in the downtown areas and the other areas that, that haven't had that funding.
Yeah, I think that's kind of nice that the, kind of the new developments are paying to kind of rehab kind of the whole.
Yeah, exactly.
The work.
Um, so, how, any real you want to get by, because it's, we're not gonna vote on it today, so.
I like the, I like the five dollars for the, the no change.
Lock it in, just kind of announce that we're locked in. All right, so you have what you need to proceed with a reading. Um, probably no need to do any emergencies, I mean, we've got plenty of time, so people can have time to come and chat about it. Um, so I expect a, probably a first reading Monday.
Potentially Monday, yeah.
If it needs to be later, because, I mean, it's not like we're, we sort of.
No, correct.
How, how do you, so I neglected to put this in there, and I thought about it, and as you were asking questions. I didn't talk about next steps being public communication. So I've been working with Chase, we, we started, we've got kind of a draft of whether this goes out in the mailer, whether it's just posted on the website, how you do it, there's a couple sheets that would go with this. But what's that communication look like before, after, for, during, and after the legislation process?
Yeah, so, so before the legislative process, it's, it's kind of interesting because I, like, over communicate on that, may or may not happen, but it sounds like it's gonna happen, um, in any descent. So beyond our hosting for first reading, second reading, I don't know if we would do much, because until we really have all the details down of like how we're gonna bill, what the number's gonna be, and it's all voted upon. So my opinion would be overly communicate, but once we know exactly what we're communicating.
Yeah, you don't want to communicate too.
It's public record, we're on camera, hiding it.
Sure. Yeah, I think like November or something, you kind of start maybe prepping the order, but not.
And the first bill will probably go at the end of March anyways, if we're doing quarterly. And, and by the way, for me, one less bill, one less thing for people to remember, put it on the trash and sewer and put it on the quarterly is, I mean, it would make my life easier if I just had to pay it once. I don't want to pay monthly a five dollar bill.
I mean, the commercial stuff, I'll let you make that, whatever makes sense, you get.
I see like, it's an, it's an additional, I mean, we do, I mean, communicate, we say, here's, you know, where you can find all of our information. I know, like the, the pre, would do other, I mean, have you had experience with other communities of like?
Yeah, and, and I guess, some communicated out long before they even get to this stage, some communicate it, they just pass the bill, and say, here it is, and they communicate it, like, this is what it means, and here's why we're doing it, and here's how you're gonna be building everything else, which I think is kind of where we're.
I think that would be nice to get it kind of like to ha- I mean, that we need to, so then that way everybody knows, and then I didn't know if we can also put on where explains it's a different topic, but, um, what's gonna be on the ballot? Aggregation.
Cause it's not related, but it's.
Yeah.
You're right, it's two things, two things.
Not related, but it's running beside it.
Put a blurb in our summer newsletter about this and just starting from how it begins.
I have no problem. I'm not gonna.
Go out or?
Yeah, so we'll probably just do another light blurb and say, say, and then, yeah.
I'm not against, it, it's fine, if we want to indicate, I'm not, I'm not worried about it or.
Aggregation's in that draft?
I like the idea of just having a blurb in there, because while we have time to let people know after we pass it, before the first, it still feels like we didn't let people know that even, you know, reach out and say, what are you doing?
Yeah, sure. Fine.
Yeah. Yeah, but you.
We never get, we never get.
This gives folks opportunity to communicate.
Yeah, that's fine. Start communicating, that sounds like. What's the new? Well, we can't vote on it though. I mean, just say.
It is the education.
Use the word like approximately.
Approximately, yeah, and it's, it's education of why, why we're doing it.
Proposal.
Have like a link to the village website, hey, for the latest.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, cause we can have these FAQ type documents right there, we may have to, yeah, a little bit, because this was based on, assuming it was, there's gonna be some things more.
You have like a, a, the list of the projects that, that would, yeah, okay.
Um, we don't, unless Haley, you've got projects posted through a CFP something, but I don't think so.
That's what I would, yeah, I think just like giving example of like your shepherd, you know, those areas that, in that people always see that.
Yeah, I mean, Haley, we, just, just like I had on the flyer here, we don't necessarily have to get into the details of the money, I would just say that the, it would, it would help fund these projects.
Sample of the project.
Yeah.
Like Bicentennial Park, everybody would benefit from that.
All right, thank you. All right, so agenda item, uh, camera on length today, so we've talked about this before, um, it came up at Park. Talked about it as Linda was saying, uh, debate wouldn't do. Um, the, I'll, I'll give you guys, I think I kind of, but I'll give you a synopsis of kind of where, uh, the committee did, their decision was recommendation. And I will say it was, it was a long conversation, um, not necessarily a, no one came to a decision, but they did take a vote, so that we did ask them to take a vote, I asked them to take a vote to help engage this conversation. So the overall recommendation, and I'm, I'm sure Linda has it, uh, are correct, generally speaking, it was, they didn't see a need to move it shorter than a hundred and eighty days. Um, however, if we did for okay, three months, not shorter, they wanted. Um, they were certainly, uh, pro background checks on anyone going over, I think it was like either two weeks, thirty days, um, back forth, but basically anyone's having any sort of length to their stay, they were, they were very pro, uh, background check. We did have a debate over what would be disqualified, wouldn't be, all that would have to be kind of hammered out. Uh, I think that the committee, and I, and I, I want to be careful, you know, we can feel free, we can gauge Linda and stuff, is I want to make sure I'm saying their opinion, not my opinion here. I think the general thought process was, the concern was more about the, making sure there weren't bad seeds, as opposed to the overall length of stay for the common, not using common, the regular non-issue camper. Side of fairly, fair representation. So I told them, um, that there are members in this body, uh, members of council that would like to see it shortened, um, there, we would be talking about it, we, obviously Parks and Rec is an advisory committee, so that's what I brought up. Then, so we bring it back here to the base, um, and clearly interested parties here, um, I, I read the forums, I know kind of where people are standing on all that, so it's, it's not like just because we don't, we're not having business, and I, it's not that we didn't, I haven't read and understand all the commentary. Um, so I think the idea tonight is to have a kind of conversation about it, uh, certainly for, and I, I'll, I'll give my opinion, um, and we can talk through some of the numbers. So on the numbers, the revenue was obviously a big part of the conversation, um, that's hard, anyone to weigh in revenue, and I'll, I'll see it the floor here to Linda in a second. Um, but basically, as you'll see on the thing, the, where the revenue comes from, when it comes, not that much of it comes from long term, but there's also a concern of what you would give up and how many of those people would stay. Three months instead of six months, it would be lose it all, would be replaced with other people. Um, but that weighed against, you know, health, safety, welfare, getting, uh, community residents being able to get in, so if an out of, non-residents there for six months, does that limit spots to people that came up? Obviously, um, one of the big proponents of having a longer stay were, uh, non-residents that had jobs that maybe in construction or something here. For me, I'm not too concerned about my residents so much, because I'm more concerned about the resident side of things and getting our citizens, I think, fulfilling it, but that was a concern, uh, kind of like it was. Um, I think that's pretty much just, you guys want to walk through the kind of revenue conversation a little bit, you guys are closer to this number, because I know Sence asked about that, then we can kind of go through the conversation here.
Well, basically what we did, we just did a very direct data analysis, I mean, what we looked at is, we want to look at what kind of revenue was generated on folks who were staying, say fourteen days, folks who were staying thirty days for longer, and then folks who were there for ninety days longer. And, and some of this I'm gonna, you know, just further done, because he's obviously boots on the ground and can attest to a lot of this, but, you know, I think, I, I think what you said, the analysis of the Parkson Rec meeting was spot on. Um, we talked about building, um, I think that they knew, uh, some of the rule implementations we've done and the portion of rules, um, as really positive steps. And I think that if you look at the camping revenue, you can kind of see where the revenue falls and what, it's not an exact science, we can't say that if we get rid of long-term camping, we definitely lose this amount of money. I will say that if you go to the park right now, you'll see that, the grand, we're out of the height of the camping season that our weekly, um, our weekly occupancy is very low, we're just a heavy weekend campground. But the folks that are there during the week, our typical community or construction workers, sheet metal workers, folks are doing all the constructions, we have, you know, central high building, travelers, that sort of thing, that's who we have staying for longer term for the most part. I think because of some of the steps we've taken to tighten up the rules, um, we don't have the issues that we had formerly with folks who maybe wanted to live there for two years or three years, that's gone. The maximum you can stay is six months, and it's, I'd rather a hundred and eighty days, a hundred and eighty days in a rolling, um, you know, year, it's not a calendar year, and it's cumulative, I think, uh, I think, uh, Aaron was asking about that earlier. Meaning it's, it's if you book a month and then you book two more months, and then later on, you're gonna book three more months, that's all cumulative, is you don't start fresh each time. So if you, if you get to that hundred and eighty days, then that's it, you're done. So that's the way we have it set up right now, so that just kind of gives you label and, um, then do you want to address some of the revenue part of it?
Um, I mean, yeah, just looking at that top, she, our like chart that we gave everybody out there, I mean, she kind of explained to me hard to know exactly how much we'd lose. Um, I think we broke it down, so we were looking at, okay, if you do it, like the top part of the fourteen plus days, if we restrict it into like, say, a two-week limit. This is all based on twenty twenty-four, just because it's the last four years, but, um, our longer-term stays, AKA anything over two weeks, was more than half of our revenue for the entire year. Now, obviously, some of those people would be there, they'd be replaced by some other people who wanted to get in, so the numbers hard to know, as you go along, you can kind of see it drops quite a bit. But you would lose definitely on some of those weekday, the long-term of those of those weekdays, you're making money on days that you're normally working, because she said are very weekend-heavy. And then some of the kind of, in addition to some of the things she said, some of the stuff that we've been doing kind of, um, to kind of crack down a little bit, you know, we did implement, this was in our license, it was changed, I don't know for you guys very recently. Allocation process, um, so if you do have any issues, we have a lot of their, a lot of all their information on file. Registration for their campers, their license, all that information we get ahead of time, where they actually come in the camp now, uh, which I think will help a lot in terms of if they have any issues, we give that to whoever needs it right away.
They have to sign off on all of our campground and our rules before they've been entered. Either they can do it online, or they can actually do it when they check in, we ask that everyone's a person coming. Again, this has changed a little bit in the past, because before it was just me, trying to do multiple things, now we actually have dedicated out this, and we have camp hosts on the weekend that are there, and they're there from May first through probably November first this year. So that's really helped tighten up on making people, you know, aware that these are the rules, and if you break the rules, you're gone.
That's everybody.
Everybody does have their own now, but we do make the, the longer-term people over thirty days, I mean, taking this, they're the ones that developed the application.
Yeah.
We give them a hard copy of the rules and have them sign that they got in actual.
And every person staying there has to sign off on the rules, whether they read or not, that's not our issue, you know, they're signing off that they have read, that they know, and it really has helped us to kick people out of campground really quickly. We have a basis now, before, without as many rules and guidelines and strictures, it was a little bit harder to get people out of campground. So, um, I've seen that be super beneficial. And then something that I think that, that Mr. Terry and I on the Parkson Rec Committee really liked, again, doing the background check. And, and, and delving into that, um, there are many services that you can use, and it really is not a service that we're going to do, because there's a lot of campgrounds out there. So basically, it's a situation where you tell the folks, if you want to stay here for longer than every day, here's a link, they go in, they pay for it, they put in their information, you don't see it, I'm just a social security member, I have no idea. They do all of that, the service then does a background check, there's, I think you've got whole, I've got information she's on, there's multiple tiers, the more deeper the background check goes, the more money they pay, obviously.
Everybody that is staying there have to do the background check, or just the first?
Well, the, the person we're proposing by staying long-term.
But no.
Just it would be anyone staying overnight.
Okay.
Like the husband.
Well, yeah, you're like, I, of the, yeah, it'd be the whole, anyone that's signing the application, like you'd have to list off, like, here's all the people that are, can be here overnight. That would be ridiculously hard to enforce, obviously, um, but that was the idea, we talked about that as well, of, okay, well, what happens if my buddy comes and stays and that person's on the sex offender list? And what do, how do we, how do we handle that? Makes it really hard, you don't, yeah, you don't, it's almost impossible for.
The primary people.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it would, it's almost impossible for like the people that are going to come and stay.
Right, the same way that your neighbors have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We say who's going to be staying, who's a camper, and they have to list anybody that's going to be staying with a camper, that person have to do a background check as well.
How long, how long have you implemented the sign up on their application, like how long has that?
We just started the application process, the rules, sign up on the rules has been in place for months, I'm not really sure.
The sign up for the rules has been there for a while, but the application part, we had to fill out our info, that was when we just had our last set of camper rules go through the council, so that was, I mean, they can love that I have to do it, not for sure. How long's it gonna?
So honestly, the system that we implemented, um, the system is much more robust than what we had before, so it's much easier to do a lot of these things, require a lot of these things, so that's what's been helpful for us.
And one of our thoughts with the, with the background checks and everything is, we think, not just the issue of, okay, they fill it up, what happens, you know, if they have something come up? But we think just generally it's a very preventative measure, and most people are not gonna fill it up or try to get a long-term stay here.
So, uh, and the year-to-date revenue is at the bottom here through July, through August? Does anyone else have any questions, or stranger, Mr. Benbo, or we kind of start chatting through it?
I have a question for Chief McKee.
Okay.
So because. For historic information, I, I know there's been ongoing issues, and like, I know we've put rules in place, we put all, you know, measures in place, but when we talk about the health, safety, well-being of our community, how much time is your department spending on call to the campground, like issues? I, and I know you, you do, you don't know who visits your neighbor's house, you, you don't, but it's a physical bit more like in and out of the community, so I'd like to hear from Chief McKee and your opinion.
I'm kind of on the spot here, um. No, I, I, I can't say how many times we've been out there, I mean, we've been out there a few times for incidents, uh. You know, I understand the background things, uh, but like just a recent incident we just had out there, those ones showed up in the background.
I, I think so, somebody has something hanging up their head, they probably would have, you know, chance to get in the background check. I did, and there's no signs of it being in the background.
In my world, I've seen a lot of things I didn't think you could do, I do.
I mean.
What we're seeing is that the only time anything will show up on the background is if you've been affected of that. If you've been alleged to something, it's not gonna show up, if you're in the process of a court process or something, like this incident we just had out there, it's not gonna show up.
It just takes one time for something to happen, and I know it can happen anyway, but it's one time for, you know, that person coming, that, that slips through the background check, next to a playground, I don't feel safe.
But, so the background check is only long-term, right?
Well, that's, that's.
Yeah.
Reason that that was discussed is because that's what was supposed to be Parks and Rec, the council was interested in taking it down to, uh, two weeks, and leave for a week and come back for two weeks. So that was roughly the thirty-day level, so I think that's where Parks and Rec said, well, anybody that would be there for thirty days would be considered longer term, and that's where they waited on that.
If any calls you have, are those, you, can you say, like, we've got.
Called out these people here, this is a long-term camper, we got called out to record calls.
It could be somebody there for two nights.
Yes, I mean, we've had people there just for a short time.
Yeah.
Maybe a rest or, you know, they could have been out there for six months, you know, have to deal with them, but I can't say which ones are out, I mean, I can't say if we've had more people that's only been there for two nights, or more people that's been there for a long period of time.
That's where it gets, that's where it gets hard.
I just, uh, you know, I think for almost thirty years, the campground's always been out there. Back in the day, we only had probably eight campers at the most, and it seemed like we'd never had any issues out there back then, and then, you know, it seems like the more campers, the more issue you're gonna have, so I'm not saying that.
And I understand.
I do, I'm United States and raise money into the park, I do, but. You know, it's, it's difficult, but the campground should belong to a municipality. I mean, we're just. I can't even think of another place that has a campground in town. Uh, they're usually in a big bar, should probably a campground or something, but, you know, I, again, I feel like, you know, I'm sitting on the spot here, but, uh. You know, I, I, I've never been for the long-term gaming, like, if you don't ask my opinion.
So. For the staff, we kind of get into our conversation.
How many sites are kind of like. From.
Like completely working, what?
Yeah.
The, pretty much the summer, from Memorial Day weekend, it's not like the first weekend of August, we're vote full every single weekend.
But it's during the week if you go out there, that's, that's what we are, we're very weekend-heavy, because if you think about it, we've got DMX, Bi-Brace, you know, Marysville, you've got multiple events going on, Dublin, Hillier. You've got all games going on, Roger Clark, I mean, you know, there's just so many events going on around us, so that's why we're so weekend heavy.
We're, we're, we're sure we can, from that, like Memorial Day weekend, the first weekend of June is usually a little, maybe a little star, but most of June, July, and we get like first weekend or two of August, we're vote full.
Like an average summer Wednesday night, you're less than fifty?
I would say probably third.
Remind me how many campsites we have.
Fifty-six RV sites or ten sites. So I think a couple of things, um, that have happened to been, I would say beneficial, is the tightening of the rules, and we did raise rates, and I think that that really, um, helped us be more in a competitive area, so that we're not seen as a cheaper alternative.
Yeah.
I saw sort of our customer base change, I'll just say that.
How many people do you think that you were able to get rid of out of the campground because of the rules that they signed? I mean, are we talking like six or like twelve or?
This year, at least the long-term ones, if there's one, there's two. Most of the other ones, but then like they wanted to add a couple of things, and we're like, no, but in terms of like actually a big thing happening, there's been two this year.
Other question for staff?
The only. Resident, so, they're getting in or choose of them.
I will say.
I'll, I'll attend to further that, I have, I have my history open, I change with what he's.
Um, I'm sure that there are times where they can't, um, I will say for holidays particularly, like Memorial Day, PCA BA opening weekend, um, Fourth of July, we are probably two, almost two-thirds of plain city addresses.
Do we give early, uh?
We do not give any early.
Everybody opens up January second.
But I don't know if there's, if we could really get around to doing that, maybe, I will say that everything fills up right away, so maybe something where we can advertise heavily to locally to residents and stuff, that, hey, be ready on January first, make your, you know, book your stuff. I don't think there's a way in the system to really.
Could, could you, just being allowed, could, I know it's all online, but could you have local residents give them weeks to come in to the campground and book through the system, not online, but through your, like you type it in, before you open it up? Yeah, yes, I'm saying.
But. An option.
As an option to.
I would probably, for that, want them to be in person, especially because.
Yeah, you verify. Yeah. They need to come and show an ID and like.
It's kind of the same thing reminds you, the quiet center, I mean, I have a staff that will, I will say people that were perhaps confused about plain city. They think they're building residents because of the place to be, and then you have to go through that, you have to verify, so, and then the amount of people.
Yeah. Well, I think in, in the, this is not where we're headed, but in the spirit of what we do at the pool, right, like prioritizing residents, I think it'd be nice if we can brainstorm on how we could open that up to residents initially.
Work to getting in, they, it doesn't sound like it's happening yet at the.
Well, but, but like, but I played weekends, like fourth, fourth of July, PCA BA opening weekend, I think a lot of people, and it's come first, so you can say. But that may be, at least saying we offer it because, you know, if you have, and I know we're trying to talk to the plain city picture, but. So pick up the counter and say, hey, why would it be counter, first thing, you know, just because they got it quicker, some stuff, just kind of go and just take. Ask people to get stuff, maybe be something to look at, and, and it's like different golf courses, or like, you know.
But it shouldn't be, I know this is a conversation, but it shouldn't have to be, we should look at this, no, plain city residents first, and make a way to make it happen, we have the util, we have the, um, our trash bill. Yeah, so.
So, alright, so are we done with questions for staff? Yeah, so I. Us, yeah, for a second, um, everyone an opportunity to talk to staff, ask questions, everything like that. So realistically, where do we stand, what do we want to do?
I mean, the, we're at a hundred and eighty days now.
We're at.
Long-term days ninety-plus, it's ten reservations. So I think the population that we're really having a discussion about is very small. Uh, I think, I might, I, I think the background check, if there's a mechanism that we have now to use that, they pay for it, it is a deterrent, it's all.
The background check is tricky. While it is a license to use our park, it's not a protected right, or, you know, it still, um, requires us not to be arbitrary, it requires us to have a rational basis.
Consistent.
Well, it has to be rationally related to an objective, what's our objective? Are we trying to keep out, you know, violent felons, are we trying to keep out pedophiles or rapists? I mean, we've got to be very narrow, and we've got to make sure that, we have to have a rational relationship for doing it. And, and again, it can be tricky, it's possible, it's, I'm not saying you can't do it, but I'm just, it's a very, it's a narrow area that we have to try to be able to, and to see if it actually accomplishes what we want. I mean, I'm not saying it doesn't, I'm just saying that we've got to put some thought into it, you can't just whip down and say, we're just gonna do background checks, and I'll take care of it. Because we have to figure out, first of all, what are we trying to accomplish, that's the first question. Second question is, how do we accomplish it, and how do the background checks tailoring that to a certain, you know, what, who's in, who's out?
Is that.
To accomplish the goal.
I'd be curious if, if this service is focused around background screening services, when I think of like vendor relationships I have at work, you know, I would expect them to come to me and say, we are gonna build our criteria for what we want as pass fail, and then they say it's pass or fail, so we're not making decisions every time. The service based on our SLA, whatever you want to use, agreed upon. The service based on our S L A, whatever you want to use, agreed upon, you know, what we implement, the service is giving us the pass fail. Then you kind of put it on a third party, maybe it's a little bit more defensible or something like that, but we're not, it's not denton. Uh, this one, this one.
No, yeah, no, no. I followed it again. Having the third party or some system that firms sets and bets at a distinctive, specific criteria, that's fine. But it's still back to the objective of what are we trying to accomplish?
Yeah. So.
Well, and, um, you know, and, and we're, you know, we're going to have to set boundaries on timelines.
Okay, so somebody, you know, had a felony in nineteen eighty-three, are we kicking them out of the park and made that no record since? You know, if somebody registered as a, has to register as a sex offender, but there are certain specifics to it that it's not, you know, there's different degrees to it. You know, from twenty years ago, is that something? So we get, again, it's a tricky area, we want to make sure that we can accomplish by having, going through the, the time and expense of what we're going for. Are we going to accomplish what we want? I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I'm just saying that there's more to it than just throwing blame over.
I, I go back to, it's ten, it's ten reservations that were, you know.
So.
That'd be thirty, be everybody over thirty days.
If we went to thirty.
Yeah.
If we went to thirty, if we didn't go to three.
Yeah.
So again, are there any other questions for?
Well, then, I guess going back to the.
Trying to have the conversation amongst us.
I know. It's not, not for staff, but.
But I want the opinions out of this body so that not out of.
Yeah, I think one eight, hundred and eighty days, I, I'm fine with that. I think the increased rules that we've done seems to have helped. I think the people, really the long term people, I have thirties, ninety-four, really the people over ninety days and ten, so I think it's a very limited population that we've been discussing. I think with every other, you know, kind of regulation of having the village, there's ways to apply for our bearings. If we have a local resident who has a good history and has a good standing and wants to go a hundred and eighty-three days, maybe they can have some application. They could apply for, you know, a, a variance like we do with other things in the village and it can be, you know, be made upon that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get some historical background on like councils, because Ms. Ferguson was on when we decided to upgrade the, the spots. And this was brought to us, and then twenty twenty happened and people, you know, like, there's a lot of movement and everything. That's kind of when like, I think long term went to two weeks. It kept creeping up when we decided, hey, we, this can rev, generate revenue and it's great, but think about our, our residents couldn't get in on Fourth of July. You know, and some other things because they don't know to get, get in there and make their camping res, um, reservations. But what do our residents want? I mean, it's nice to be able to offer, I know like your in-laws come in and they camp when they're visiting, that's a, that's an added benefit. But if we're trying to attract, I think the, just people passing through or, like, we have to keep putting our residents first. And is it, is just like the long term look and everything of camping worth it for when we have Christmas or lights at the park and everything and events? And the, we have to make them winterize in the wintertime. What is, I, I think that's what Mr. Lafayette is saying, like, what is our overall? Like, it started out being like a summertime, like kind of April to October experience. And then it just, it keeps now to year round and it's, what is the benefit to you living in the community with this besides the dollar amount and everything? So I, I know that's a factor of it, but I think that is the question, like, do we want it just to be the recreational campground that it started out to be? That serves our community during the summertime? I think that's what Mr. Terry is also trying to get, get.
I'm trying to, yeah, but, yeah.
Uh, so I, just kind of going back on one thing with the, the background check part on the, I, I don't know thirty days is the right answer because somebody could come in just for a weekend and be just as violent. So like, I don't, I don't know why, I mean, I get thirty days is going to be the wrong person, but if that person sees, oh, I have to fill it out in thirty days, well. Book my stay for twenty-eight days, ha ha, no, I don't fill out the background check. So, I mean, I would be, if we're doing a background check, I think it would be, you add the rate on and it's for everybody. Because now it's going to be equal, we're not going after the thirty day camper. It's, everybody's in that, and then it's missed off, I said, then you can narrow it down scope because if that, whatever that figure is, it's going to be equal. That would be, that would be my thought on the.
I think the application, I think the application, not to, I think the application of the background check is something that we would, a bridge we would cross once we get there, and of course, these are all thoughts we have to get to, I don't think anyone has all the answers, and we'd have to do some research. But I don't think you're invalid that what's the difference between one day and fourteen or thirty? I can tell you why it came up as thirty is the idea of risk mitigation, because if you have a problem, two days is better than the problem we just had that could have gone into November. And by having it, it mitigates the length of the risk. Where that comes, just for why it was that date and not, and it's just kind of burdened some on people that are just trying to do it for like a weekend. That's really what the conversation, okay, but the point that Ms. Carney made earlier about like, okay, well, I set it up and then I invite a sexual predator in. Like, what, what's to stop that? So there's a lot of hoops.
There's so many things.
Problems, there's a lot of problems.
Now, I do think, maybe looking at, I think there's a, a bigger pricing tier, I think a lower pricing tier for our village residents. I know it's like three dollars, three dollars difference now, but almost looking at, and I think as Mr. Ranger said, by the being higher, kind of may eliminate some of the issues too. Is, yeah, maybe the, maybe the rate stay the same at this, go up an additional, come up with a twenty dollars, ten dollars, fifty, I don't know how camping rates are. But once again, you put the rate up, that may stop some of the.
Sure.
You know, maybe hopefully.
So I'm a little confused on what we're talking about here because I hear, it sounds like you're saying no winter camping, we just.
Yes.
Talk about no long term, and so I, like, I don't understand what our goal here is. What is our goal? So we, what are we.
The question is, what's the length of a stay at the campground? Obviously, that's a million other things. There's, that's what we took to the parks for activity, is technically we took length of stay at the campground. I think based on public feedback, things like prioritization of residents, of state health, safety, welfare, based on the individual staying there, all got added in. So you're kind of talking about campground policy in total, I think now, but the original was just length of stay.
I mean, another thing you could look at is doing, I mean, we have a length of stay of two weeks, but there's no limit on how many days you can stay here. You just can't, you gotta kind of come and go, right? So.
Sure.
It, it maybe mitigates some of the stuff you're talking about, Jerry, but I mean, we also went back to a real conversation with like the winter camping, like, there's a need for that in central Ohio. Does it benefit me directly? No, but maybe a.
But then why does it have to be our community being winter camping? I'm just saying, like, there's actual campgrounds that, like, are, like, it's taxing on our own staff when they are having their events and things that they could be doing. And, but they're, like, we're, we're taking so much time in the campground, like, what is the benefit to our community?
Let me, what, winter camp, what?
November, it's listed.
Here, sorry, I missed it.
Ms. Ferguson?
So it's a five, five month period?
Well, for me, I mean, it's back to what everybody's already said, residents, it's an enemy to us. So that has taken precedence in my mind, they should have opportunity, I love the thought of allowing that to be for everybody else.
Yeah.
Um, there again, that, safety for residents for sure is of, everybody is on, you know, at the top of our minds. I just, I get confused about how we do accomplish that.
Sure.
With methods, so I think that is still a big question in my mind. Because I, I do think that no matter, there's no foolproof system.
Sure.
And so I think it requires a little more thought and.
So piggybacking off of what you're saying, it requires more thought, my suggestion would be to remove camping for the winter, shut it down, revamp and relaunch it in the spring. That would give us time to put thought process together, um.
Are you, so, winter camping, long term camping, you can still have long term camping and not have winter camping, so you stay for.
Start in April and.
Seven months. And that, you're not, you're not, you're not stating you have a problem with that, it's more the winter.
I think it, it, well, it's, it's also like you, it gets tricky into like the, the longer, it opens the door for like what we just experienced. Um, again, what do we want for our community?
Yeah, so, so now everyone's had a chance, I will say that I'm very much on board with the idea of what is, and I've always put back to what is the campground? The campground is not a permanent residence, it's not a place for someone that doesn't have somewhere to go. It is a recreational campground. It is a campground for plain city residents, out of town families, people that lived here and moved away to come back to enjoy. It is not to provide housing for transient workers. It shouldn't be that, and it never should have been that. The reason we had school buses pick us up because the impression was that's what it was. So for me, it gets back to Mayor Carney's point of, and we've all said it different ways, okay, what is it to be? And it's a recreational campground. And a recreational campground, I frankly have a permanent residence in Plain City. There's, there's very few people that want to stay there longer, the plain city residents probably aren't the problem. It's not that, it's the people that don't have somewhere else to go. And I agree with Mayor Carney that I don't quite understand why it's on the village of Plain City to provide a spot for these people and not provide campground facilities for residents, neighbors, family members. But, so I'm a hundred percent on board with prioritization of, I'm a hundred percent on lower fees. The revenue, the city's going to have plenty of revenue. We are going to lose thirty thousand dollars, it's a bummer, sure, but.
Sixty-five for winter.
Well, sixty-five for winter, at thirty and sixty-five is probably not human, right? Sixty-five, but the revenue should not be put ahead of the residents and the health and safety. And from a risk mitigation standpoint, the shorter you make, the, it just the less likely there's a problem, the less likely the problem is. To be totally honest, my only real hang up on this is that the Parks and Rec Committee recommended only, they were, they didn't want to go shorter than three months. Or I would go, I would recommend going more, shorter. I don't, I want to value your opinions and there's a reason why us to chat, because I wanted us to kind of talk through this. And there's at times where I think that opinions from staff are going to get embedded into our conversation. We are the ones that live here, our families are the ones that live here. For me, it's a recreational campground. If you even think that is your effort, we already miss it. So if you have a house and your vice lunch asks, like, hey, can we go camping, like, this weekend, I'm like, probably not. They're like, oh, we can't do that, I'm like, no, be online at the exact time of opening day weekend to get it. That shouldn't even be the question. Like, yes, of course, prior, uh, residents should go to residents first, I can't believe we don't do that already, frankly. Um, but for me, I think long, if, if you're doing a six month stay from out of town, how can you say you're not living there? Like, where, where do you live? Help me understand. Like, I don't want to have to, like, say it out loud, like, that's not what it's for, go to a different. And we always say, well, this is one of the only places that amenities exist for a reason, because other villages and towns don't want to do that. That's not what towns and villages, we don't, we don't want to be landlords and at, at six months, we're landlords. If we, if we close down winter campground and someone says, well, where am I going to go? Well, then that's already a problem, we already, then that's already, we proposed this, we go with Mayor Carney's proposal, hopefully everyone's. Sure, okay, great, if it cleans it all up, fine, so be it, but if someone comes to, says, well, where am I going to go? That's kind of the point. And so I'm, I, I, the biggest problem I have, like I said, is that the Parks and Rec Committee, I don't know if they fully appreciate or understood. I try to really hold back my opinions there so I could have them here, is that all of these challenges we face and these conversations we have and the, and the million of comments I see. And one of the most passionate Facebook posts we've seen in like a year is because of people saying like, why do I bend over back for non-residents? Why are residents staying there so long? So for me, if we want residents to stay longer, I, I, I don't even care because for me, it's really, the non-residents should have a three month at maximum stay. Shorter for all I care and I, I, get rid of winter camping, rip the beat it off, I'm, I'm, I'm supportive.
So are we, uh, winter camping, or say you just can't stay there for the full five months, but you could come stay for the weekend and.
No, we don't have winter camping, we're recreational summer.
No, but you could stay there for the weekend and the winter, still open?
No.
But no, because.
They shut the water down, they shut up, they winterized the camp.
Okay.
Because like we require them to put the skirting around and it's just like, then you, you think you have this beautiful park and then you're out there and it's just, but it's at no fault to the people that are staying there because we've asked them to do that, but again, like our residents, if you're out there strolling.
So we're saying you can't down and shut down for the winter.
Yeah.
Nobody's staying.
Right.
And just, just to be clear, I want to like, my biggest expectation on voting on something tonight is that because this is a recession, we didn't get a chance to speak. So I would be hesitant to do any sort of motions until Monday. So, uh, us to have the conversation, people to be able to listen to the conversation, listen that we understand what we're going through, what we're talking about, that they can come back and say their piece. But I think that we as a body need to figure out, like, what's the thing we're going to motion?
Motion?
Vote it up or down, and, and, and then it's got to go to rest for a year. And for me, shortening to three months or cutting it winter is logical insert, I get it, the background check's makes logical sense, I'm into it. I think there's a million problems with it as well, I have no idea how you enforce it.
Yeah.
Um, but putting the residents first, making sure that we establish that it's a recreational campground, not somewhere that you stay at. And figuring out the best way to do that, it's always been my goal. And that, since the minute that bus stopped, the bus showed up at that campground, I, that's been my problem. And everything that Mayor Carney's bringing up about problems we have there, police problems we have goes along with that. But I just think it's that we've, we've fallen into the trap of what is it?
We have many people who stay.
The business that we're scared of walking away from revenue, it's ridiculous.
Keep the campground flying, like, like what has to be maintained over the winter?
Uh, it's pretty minimal, we replace some hydrants that break, um, you know, we clean the bathrooms and keep that in good condition, but overall cost is pretty low. New gravel every once in a while, that kind of thing.
So, so with, with that, I think it's kind of clear, even some stuff we have with park type residents and, well, I, I do think there's a list of things that, that probably we all agree. Regulations need to be fixed, so I think go back to right now. Where that makes a, I think shutting down, especially for winter, we can come up with our policies and everything that we.
I will just say for this winter, at least for the months of November and December, we already have people booked, because we do open it for the full year, have quite a few, a lot of reservations those months. Uh, I know.
That's long term.
Uh, quite a few short, they're coming for holidays and stuff, there might be like one or two, there's not a lot of long term, it's probably like three or four total those two months, but. Are we booked just through? We're booked through the end of December, through the.
Nothing, nothing for.
There are, I think there's like two or three people that are, at least as of right now, have booked like a month or so that were planning on continuing that into the year.
I think if you want to say park type residents, it's, it's a record campground, November, December typically aren't like real that cold. So I think you do feel families coming in to stay, you know, to visit people, so I think it's.
No, I did ask, um.
Yeah, I think we keep it open for like two weeks or, you know, this, but you just, you can't be there for more than a month.
I, Lafayette, like, on that policy, like, if we were to, like, he, and you, your advice you gave, but that, we made the policy. we can act that understanding correctly on, like reverse that.
It's a little bit of crap. Yeah, yeah. So, we've talked, I, that, but yeah, a ordinance or anything like that. So I think it, everyone, everyone think, if they want, you know, and be fit, so, but otherwise, they, their answer was do it. Will people be able to see, be able to vote?
People see if they want to come during this section.
Yeah.
I mean, we're all green, we're wearing greens that we, maybe not shut, can't shut down, but you can't say, oh, you can't say...
But if we, if we look at the revenue, I mean, just like September, January, February, say, ten to three main for months, because I do like November, kind of fall, especially early, you know, begin, you know, but, so... I mean, on this, yeah, uh, you know, and you look at, if February is left out, January is a little bit higher fifteen, probably snowbirds maybe just traveling back, people coming in, but, I mean, three months of the year where, you know, just kind of shut that. From revenue standpoint, yeah, sixty-five, it'd be thirty-six thousand, so, you know, about half of what it's here.
Yeah.
Six thousand, thirty thousand.
That's kind of our, our winter.
That's right there, and it still gives us that reset time to get old regulations, kind of policy. Not so fast, but every time, and just start January, February, I think, be something.
Here's, here's shut off, January, or, yeah.
This is our, like, I mean, I would...
It's, it's opening up for people like family, it's shutting down anybody to...
And then like when you think about it, you can say like, take down the long-term, but if you want to come in, I, but what would that do with like winterizing and stuff? That's, that's...
I'm a camper, you still, something, I think, you're there, September twenty-eighth, you probably could have barriers set up for your camp.
When I was talking about what we have to do, yeah.
Oh, yeah. We winterize the hydrants, we...
On you.
I think you come in, November, you probably need, and you're trying to begin, you're not gonna push stuff.
Two, two things, one is, one is, which is, what we have booking in December. And so, and then there's, and then there's the long-term action. So the long-term action, we stop winter camping and we say it's no March, okay, that's a long, you know, the way we... I'm saying right now, we do have, we do have people that have any plans and need to wrap. I thought, if, there's no urgency in shutting down right now, it's putting together, and we're saying, here's a long-term. So that's interested in holding that band off, and, and our, uh, if January, March, there, that's a problem. Yeah, and I would be, you know, I, I recognize trying to make positive changes in the future, we can think about being, you know, already in place. I said peace.
So, I think this topic, that million that we will have between now and Monday, that Mr. Granger and Dan about, they're way more...
Which is why everybody, that's how we, we want you to feel, like, we want to feel like people are interested, so we put this stuff here each today.
Thank you everyone for coming tonight, I like to think my opening acts that I had.
Yeah.
A little bit of an update here for planning and zoning, architectural, commercial design standards.
So, what I did, that all kind of sounded like a zoning code update, so this is like, architecture, commercial design, so they deeply kind of discuss it, because that means that's easy to under, to put all these under, no problem, so, just a two or five years, we just gotta...
Yeah, this isn't an entire zoning, this is just two subject matters, that's it, so it should be under forty-five minutes. Uh, so, architectural, commercial design standards. Um, so, we're, you know, we're excited, we're, we're getting commercial, you know, inquiries now, we're getting commercial parks. Um, we do have a little bit of pause because of the sewer issue, so we have some time to get some stuff ready. So ideally, these are type of things we like to roll out starting at the beginning of the year. So this is gonna be looking at all of our commercial, industrial, and multifamily projects that we have coming into the village. Uh, this is going to set that standard, you know, we, we, we have that design guide suggested booklet that we give all the, all the developers that come in. This is taking that step further and actually putting it in code, these are, gonna give us a little more teeth on, on, on these architectural designs. So why the need to promote high-quality, better-looking community? We're gonna focus a lot on our corridors, so forty-two and one sixty-one are gonna definitely be more, heavier on the requirements, the restrictions. You know, we're gonna, we're talking about limiting, you know, certain materials on facade. So, you know, vinyl always comes up, we don't want to see vinyl on commercials, so that's gonna be limited. We're gonna come up with primary and secondary material lists, so you could choose from a, you know, long list of material lists, high-quality materials for primary lists, or for primary, and then let's say that's seventy percent, thirty percent could be secondary or accent. So that's where you could add in some of your different materials, but this is just upping our standards, upping our... We don't have a lot of commercial right now, so this is the time to, to take hold it and kind of promote what that, what that's gonna look like.
Question overall about architectural, commercial design standards. So, I'm always a little confused about this part, and maybe Mr. Herrmann is, and he is subject matter expert in Chinaman. So like, how enforceable are all of these things? So like, would we have zoning code, does it say, like, it's not gonna say you have to be like this, but it's gonna be style, it's gonna be this is the look we want, how does, how do I take this and enforce it and apply it? And make sure it's not up to the interpretation, like, how does that work?
Sure, yeah, so this is, you know, we, we float out there, we've been floating the, you know, modern farmhouse style look is kind of what we're looking at, to try to keep that rural character. Um, so, we do mention that in the standards, and it mentions that in our design guidelines that we're giving out now. This is taking those materials that you commonly see in that and putting those, those are requirements. So when these businesses come in, they always have to go in front of P and Z for, for plan review, for site review anyways. So, while we're, while we're doing that site review, we're already looking at all these materials and these, these items now. We're making suggestions now, but we don't have any teeth to make them. This is gonna give us those codes that says we have to use these materials for this percentage of this facade. Uh, so this is going to, this will be our way in to, to enforce it.
So, so, my lawyer is here, it's keeping out of jail, right? I can't just say no to people's, if they follow the code. So, if someone comes to P and Z, P and Z says, I don't like the look of this, right? That's probably not enforceable and it's too arbitrary, right? So, these will give us a piece and say, we don't like this, or this doesn't meet this architectural, commercial design standard. And that's where we can say, yeah, we could be creative, but also we could be restrictive in so much and say, hey, well, it's not me, it's the code that says you can't have vinyl. So, I want to be able to, I want, I'll let you go, I want to be able to hold people to a higher standard by rule, and then hold them to a lesser standard by exception, so that like, if I want, if, if something comes and looks nice, but it doesn't meet our standard, like, if we're overly restrictive, I don't, and overly being is not the right term, if we're properly restrictive, but we allow exceptions down, I'd rather than be lower and hope that people try to exceed the standard, does that make sense? Like, if we, for example, we did all brick, right, some communities all brick, that's probably too late for them. But if we did something strict, that's, hey, here's what it needs to look like, here's everything, and then the plan and zoning said, okay, I see what you did here, I see why you did it, that's okay, I feel like that's the way, like, I would think, you know, what it... You're, you're the one that sits in committees and knows all this, so...
I mean, I, I came in earlier this year and basically, so it's like, we have a design guide, there might be a few tweaks in it, but I think it's a pretty good, pretty good guide, like, saying, hey, this is the style that we're looking for with everything. But as he said, it's like, hey, this is our guide, everybody likes it, blah, 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 but we don't have it in our code, so we can't, so, let's slap it, we'll go, planning and zoning goes, you know, uh, you know, a commercial property comes and says, this is our cookie cutter box, hundred percent vinyl all the way around, it meets all the stuff, and we go, hey, this is our design code, this is what we want to see, and they're gonna be like, that's not what we do. You know, if they're coming in, and I'm looking, oh, but if they meet all the criteria of, we could say this is what we like, they're gonna be like, we're not doing it, and there's really nothing that we can do. By putting in our code, saying, hey, this is our design standard, but it needs to meet, and we set the minimum, say this design standard, I almost think kind of the... Now this raises it up, they're gonna have to meet that. So if they come in and say, hey, we just do vinyl siding on our buildings, we have and go, hey, like you said, sorry, I, I'm just following what our code says.
Yeah, okay, cool.
They want to be here, they'll build here, too. There's, I gave a couple of examples, like, the bottom one there is Taco Bell. I, I mean, so, you know, we're going, we, we don't have those type items, so we're going to start seeing these fast, we're gonna start seeing these chain models. These chain models have multiple models, so just because you see one that looks like one in one community, doesn't mean that's what it's gonna look like in this community. They have options that would fit our standards.
Cool.
So, uh, and you know, these, this is as close as we can get to without having a review board. You know, I, I know we didn't have success with, with our last one, so this is the way to, to get as close as we can, you know, without...
And the planning and zoning would be the ones that...
So, one thing that we will need to discuss with this, you know, this all sounds great, new construction, how we deal with existing structures. So that's gonna be the conversation we'll need to have. So uptown, take uptown out of it, they have their own guidelines, they have their own standards, it's everywhere else, so pretty much anything outside of forty-two that's existing. At what point, what percentage, and this is common in, in other communities, let's just say, um, a neighboring business, let's just say they are doing a renovation, at what point do they now have to fall in line with this code? So this is common in other communities, um, is that percentage, you know, is it, is it forty percent? Forty percent of the facade is replaced, it now has to go into the new category. Because we do have some, we do have some businesses that are completely vinyl siding, that's not permitted in this, you know, in architectural design. At what point repairs, at what point is a repair not a repair, and so, those are some things that we're gonna need to talk about. Um, so I do have a draft, my, my goal would be to have this draft in front of P and Z October, um, to have in front of council after the reading, no, it'd be in November, to have it passed in December, and to have it ready for January one.
My question would be, so we have the architectural, commercial design standards, but what about, um, our home standards?
Yeah, uh, to be honest, I don't know if we're ready.
I think we're ready, Mr. Hutchison, I think with the amount of homes that are coming here, I think that we've got to get these standards set, because that way it helps our commission to be able to say, here's our guidelines, and not let it be so fluctuating. So that is my challenge to you, is to bring that as well.
No, yeah, and that's no, and that's no problem at all, um, just so we know, you know, most, most residential houses are vinyl, so if that's what we're talking about, no vinyl, uh, anytime we, we change these standards, materials to residential, affordability is gone, it's out the window, so I just want to make sure we know that, that's no problem.
I don't think we're saying no vinyl, but...
We're saying like maybe have the stone, there's a lot of neighborhoods that have, you know, stone or brick, you know, front and side and vinyl back, but it's...
The front is a brick. Yes.
But that's, I think that, it, it allows us to, you know, as, as we are growing, and when people are talking about what kind of community you want to see, and the aging of a community, that would age better, in my opinion.
Um, something else I, I'm just throwing out is, and I know we had a few more final, it was a design review board for, for everything else, but, I mean, I do think, you know, the community is growing, we're getting more people in, it is, you know, still looking at having like an architectural review board, design review, review board. And also thinking maybe if, if something, you know, that can help out taking some stuff off of planning and zoning, that, you know, they can focus on some of the other stuff, and then design stuff would be piggybacked on to that, that board and... Different things, you know, almost to think about relieving, especially for like, let's just say like McDonald's, or a food, it, it would take kind of one thing, you know, the architectural or design review board, um, not to mention, you know, getting, you know, looking at, reaching out, getting like some experts on some stuff who, you know, construction, you know, just kind of setting up some qualifications for that board. Yeah, there's different avenues that go about if who puts on it and different things like that, I know Marysville has one, um, I don't know if communities around here have it. I, I don't think, I don't want to put, edit, not, I think, I think that should still be on the table, just looking at, at all of our potential options for, you know, as require, I almost think as we require more on stuff like this, you're putting more on to planning commission, planning and zoning commission to do.
Yeah, so I, we could definitely do that, you know, it is, when we do a, a design review board or an architectural design board, we are opening up to personal, you know, opinions, kind of what we had to mess with, with the last one, um, so that, we just got, yeah, just gotta be careful.
That's what I said, I think finding some of the, the right people.
Yeah, that, I mean, we can look, we can look into that. We, we do, and that's where these standards is going to eliminate a lot of... I have a draft, yeah, yeah, and I, we can, I can share those, so just... Gotcha, gotcha. Now, this one is not really zoning, but what we're gonna talk about, exterior property maintenance. We currently, in our zoning code, we have some property maintenance items listed in there, but we do not have a true property maintenance code. This is something that we are well past in the need of, uh, most, most, all communities have it. These do belong in the building chapter, uh, they can still be enforced by any department, but they would go in chapter thirteen, but the exterior property maintenance code. Just giving you some examples of the difference between zoning and property maintenance. Zoning is land use, what you can and can't build, where you can and can't build it, it's kind of looking into the future. Property maintenance is, once it's built, it's how you maintain it and take care of it. Uh, those are kind of two different ways, so tall grass and weeds, that's not really a zoning thing, it's in our zoning code, because that's, we don't have a separate code. Light and debris and trash, that type of items, we have some, um, language in our zoning code that covers that, that should belong in a property maintenance code. Property maintenance codes in a lot, in some communities are just as long and just as many pages as the zoning code. We don't need that many. There is... I'll go back to that one, but, so here's just some examples of... I'll go back to that one, but, so here's just some examples of violations, so tall grass, trash free, outdoor storage, inoperable vehicles, painting, like paint. These type of items are all items in a property maintenance code that has their own line section, that has their own, their own section in that chapter, in, in a little more detail than just overall blight. What, you know, blight can mean a lot of things to a lot of different people, so these property maintenance codes are specific to that. I've been writing property maintenance codes, that's when I started out, almost 20 years ago. International Code, International Code Council has a international property maintenance code that a lot of people use as their model, it's just a base, you take it, some people adopt it as is, and a lot of people take it and then they just make it their own, because there is a lot of good bones there. So what we would propose, and we had drafted at one time, would be similar to that and just tailored to, to fit us. This is just exterior only, the international code goes interior too, and we're not, we're not to that point where we need to go in people's houses yet, so, this is just exterior. So, there's some, there's a lot of things, those are residential and commercial. So, to make this successful, you know, there's a couple things we, we would need in place, obviously staff, we don't have the staffing to, to take on a property maintenance code right now. So those are some things that we would need to look at in the future. But there's a lot we could do in lieu of this, or at least while we're getting ready for this. So we've done, when I say we, I, I have been a part of many different municipalities who offer different type of programs. So we had tool lending programs where we, we had a tool closet, that we had lawnmowers and snow, or paint brushes, paint sprayers, power washers, things that were free for the community. The community can, if they need to do some work on their house, they could come and borrow tools for free and bring it back. Those are very successful and at very low cost and, and, and low, not many personnel to run that type of program. We do those, we do sponsored cleanup days where we rent dumpsters in, in certain, you know, particular parts of town, and people could bring their trash and debris, clean up their yards, clean out their basements, whatever they wanna do, and we could do different kind of things like that. So those things are, could be proactive and help, you know, give options. So if we do a property maintenance code and we're out enforcing this code, what's nice about like the tool lending program is, we're giving them option, you know, because a lot of times you'll get, "Well, I can't fix my house because I don't have, I don't have, I don't have this and that." We have, we have the tools available for you. Volunteer groups, we could get some volunteer groups together. We used to do, we call Christmas in July, where we would pick some families, would nominate families and we would go do minor house repairs, you know, on the outside, fix a deck, add a loose board, paint a house or something like that. So there's a lot of things we could do to be proactive. We should honestly do those, probably regardless if we have property maintenance code, but those are just tools that could be a part of the property maintenance code. Any questions or any concern or thoughts about property maintenance?
So real quick, I appreciate kind of the volunteer groups, because I think so, it's running through my head, like, you know, some stuff that people were not able to do that, and I don't know how, the city, you know, it's like, you know, some of the different, like church organizations in the area should kind of, I know they've done stuff, it's like, you know, I don't wanna say facilitator, but you know, somebody's in need and can't do it, you know, they reach out to, you know, the village or, and it's like, can we be like that person, but, you know, is that able to be done where it's like, hey, you know, either we have, hey, contact this organization, you know, they're, they kind of offer that is...
Yeah, I, I think, so there's different options. I have been a part of where the cities did do that, I had a part that, well, also we just helped organize it and these other organizations, they grant it, they were responsible for, but we would, you know, we would donate materials or paint or, or, you know, we would help get volunteers for those groups. So there's different things we could do. There are some grants, you know, I, I think, probably, we probably don't qualify for a lot of the CDBG grants for home repairs and, and rehabs, but, you know, there are, there could be some instances out there where we might be able to find some minor grants that we, that we could potentially qualify for to help us with, with those type of projects. But, yeah, so that's, you know, so that's, that's a, you know, one thing from not really having one to going to one, honestly, that's, that's a shock for a lot of people. When you have a home, you've been in your home and it's in need of repair, and all of a sudden someone's telling you, "You gotta do something about it." So we wanna make sure when we, when or if we do this, we need to make sure we have those tools to help as well. Unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to help everyone, and not everyone's gonna want our help either, which will result in legal action, just like zoning, if someone doesn't comply with property maintenance code or a zoning code, you know, the ultimate remedy is legal action for that.
You're saying we can't fully do this until they need to staff?
Uh, so, yeah, and when I say staff, and when I'm, when I'm talking about, we don't need 10 new people, but maybe five, no, just 10. So, you know, we, uh, we are in, the, the planning and zoning department, we need a field person now for, for zoning inspections. So, yeah, I, I envision, I envision a full-time person, to be honest with you, doing property maintenance and zoning inspections, so it's pretty much a field person. That's what I could see us starting this. I think we do a big PR push, obviously, if we're gonna do this, that's been huge PR. We give people plenty of time, and hey, maybe we're doing targeted neighborhoods, we're, we're coming and we're letting you know, hey, we're, we're gonna be out here in the month of April, just giving you a month ahead, help, you know, if you need help, let us know, and, and just so people are aware, but, yeah, PR is, well, like anything we do, we'll, we'll meet that.
Yes, I'll meet that.
I think four years ago, we did a hazardous waste day, and that was a huge hit, and people have been asking, like, when are we gonna have that again to give that opportunity? I think during that time, we tried to, I hosted a, you know, if you clean up a bag of trash around Plain City, you got entered in to win, like, a man with a dustpan donated a free carpet cleaning and, I think, house cleaning or whatever, and we had a few takers, but again, like, we didn't have a good PR push on it. So, I think there's like some pretty good ways, that'll be in the spring, but what I envision is maybe like this fall, like have a, how are we winterizing our homes and, and prepping for fall and winter and, you know, even like with our own business, can work in business angles with, you know, getting your HVAC checked or, you know, different, different things that we could use, but...
It's a, it's a big partnership, I mean, we, so, we, in other places I've been, and we had worked with our local handyman stores, our, our local hardware stores that donated, you know, so it was, it was a sponsor for them, too, I mean, it looked, it looked good for them, they, they got materials, donated materials. We could, I mean, we could do homeowner workshops, you know, we have a lot of first-time homebuyers that have never maintained their own home before, don't know how. I did, I, now that he's on, maybe we could resurrect DIY with Derek, I used to do a little pre-podcast thing where I would go on it and just show someone how to simply power wash their home that, that didn't know. So, yeah, I think we could be pretty proactive on a lot of this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so realistically speaking, I hate to turn this conversation to this, so, when we get, probably Mr. Lewis first, when we get a conversation and a headcount conversation, are we, are we at a point now, do you know where, so we hired our financial analysts, we hired our communication person? I know there's a wish list of a million different, and I think we're close on a place, we have a million different, is, are we going to be bringing kind of another headcount conversation to personnel finance, like, and put together a recommendation on, obviously, either, I'm sure everyone wants headcount, where we, where it makes sense and what we prioritize and everything like that?
Yeah, we're having the conversation at the right time, we all talked, that will definitely be a part of the budget conversations. I think our timeline is kind of use the rest of the year to get the property maintenance code in, in effect, use the spring to do the cleanups and the PR, and then hopefully bring someone on late spring really.
And then the big one is our, I would call it more commercial property maintenance areas, specifically a couple that are happening on the 42, where they're kind of behind us, that's just, it's a mess with leftover waste and that stuff. You know, I think that's another one, I know some of the stuff, you're talking more residential, but, I mean, I...
Well, this covers all, it covers everything.
Are, because, you know, we have some properties, you know, I think, that have been, you know, get letters in there, or, you know, or they're being maintained and they're pulling stuff up to standard, you know, in the downtown area or uptown area, but some others that are kind of on our peripherals, doing that, and then kind of this will be kind of the zoning stuff, property maintenance, this stuff gets annexed into the village, it may not, you know, it may be in the village property, it might be a farm field, but if it's a PUD that he has the, these codes that have to be maintained this way, but it's a farm, I think that's also something on the, you know, getting it covered, because if it comes in this one, then, okay, this property here is on this one, well, why am I having my grass eight inches in this property that's out here?
Property maintenance does not know zoning, there's no such thing as zoning in property maintenance. It doesn't matter if you're residential, it doesn't matter if you're a business for 10 years, it doesn't matter if you're a brand-new business or a farm field, it's, it's treating, it spells out what is the violations are. It's not general or open, you know, you know, to, to suggestion, it is very specific and it's, it does not, there's nothing really in here in a property maintenance code that really even defines commercial versus residential, it's just property, it's property. A missing gutter is a gutter.
And intersection, that's in the Hillier Columbus part of Hillier, that looks like pride.
So, but this is definitely the time, you know, we're talking at the right time.
So I guess, I guess for me, what are the next steps? What should I expect? So, like, does this go to P and Z, does this, what is, what happens?
Property maintenance goes, we'll come to you, we'll not go to P and Z, it's not, it's not planning, no, it will go to P and Z, taking the old stuff out of the planning and zoning code, but this, the property maintenance code will go in chapter 13, which will only come in...
So, I mean, I think we have a, like, huge, huge, big, big, such, such, my, very, big, big, that's gonna get around, I think, as long as that, not be, be, maybe, I think, we're talking about getting it next time, start, I, to, like, for this, it's, it's big.
No, I mean, because I would say probably a majority, I mean, weeds and grass, that's, that's gonna be a summertime issue, so we're kind of getting the, you know, kind of starting to get more of that slow thing.
Now, if we don't have staff to support it, it doesn't stop us from having it, it means we can't enforce it. It almost seems like that's the thing, yeah, you still send a letter, you still bring up the conversation, start having the conversation.
It is, of course, you have, the, the, simple stuff, but with, front, back, out, what they do.
It's a minor misdemeanor.
Yeah, but...
It's a minor misdemeanor.
But that, if there's...
Oh, I mean, it's a, it's a fine, yeah, I mean, there'll be a fine process, I mean, they can carry guilt, I have never...
No, I would have, okay.
They could, but, but, you know, they're not...
Now, certainly, they just, I, they made that yesterday, I mean, they started, they forced it out and third-party, like, were legal and everything, so they just started doing that, and I, I think, I think they understand where you're coming from of the campaign, but I, I still think launch that campaign this fall, encourage people to clean up things, so do all, do a fall cleanup.
Yeah, I mean, we currently, well, just call it, we can't, we can't go out looking for this stuff right now. So, but, yeah, but still, we can have this ready, we can get it ready, have everything ready, get the legal side, whatever that's gonna look like, get that ready, I mean, we've got, still, there's maybe not a lot, a whole lot to talk about, but there's a lot of work to do to get this ready. You know, another big thing about this, too, that, that is another important part of this, is the nuisance payment, is us giving us the ability to actually take action on something. So it may not necessarily be cited in the court, let's just say, we have an abandoned house right now that has built a halfway illegal porch on it, nuisance payment would allow us to go actually remove that and assess the property. So, we don't have that right now in ours.
I'm listening to having an external company come in and manage this, because I feel that the basis difference in our, is about, good, not, if there's no financial motivation for us here to, like, we're not trying to...
I, I personally, with, there's a lot of third-party inspection companies, and unfortunately, it's, it's just one thing that we kind of lose control of.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not interested in that, but I, I like the idea of this, I mean, I like this is... Yeah, I think we, we have to do it, but I do think it's, there is the, you know, you can tell your kids, you know, so many times, that, you know, they're gonna keep doing that, so, I mean, what, what that spot is at this point, but I think, you know, getting stuff in place, yeah.
I mean, our, our residents are excellent in responding, I mean, we are really, I think, really fortunate, really lucky, the amount of enforcement we have on the zoning side of things and the compliance that we actually get. I mean, we currently only have two, I think, that are open and outstanding right now, so, I mean, that's, that's pretty good, that is really good.
Look, you call people, I bet you.
Talking about, you don't have to be, it doesn't have to be criminal, you civilly can enforce your zoning, so it's not, I mean, again, depending on which stick you wanna use, but if somebody's, just never complying and not going to comply, then you can go to court and force them to comply, get a warrant from the board, and then...
They have to pay your fees and everything else, so it's...
Creates a lot of headache.
But... Any other questions or another surprise?
See, uh, no, that was it, that was it.
So, zoning and zoning adjacent discussion item closed. That now will finish our portion of the meeting. I would welcome a motion in our executive session pursuant to Ohio Rebs Code, Section 121 dot 22G2, consider the property for public purposes.
Motion. Executive session.
Check.
Mr. Hartman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes, will we be coming back with any items? And who would we like to invite?
Uh, Mr. Evans, Ms. Sonnet, and Mr. Stanford, if he's coming back.
Okay, cool. Rest of your office.